I'd like to welcome each one of you guys this morning.
I'll mute your mic.
Okay, now it's on. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone here this morning. If you would, at this time, please turn your cellphones off or put them on mute. And this time, we stand for the invocation and pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here this morning and to do the business of the great people of Walton County. We ask for your guidance and support in everything we do. We pray for those, dear Lord, that are in foreign countries now that may be under attack trying to preserve our way of life. We pray for them and their families. We thank you, Lord, for everyone that serves in any capacity that serves the people of Walton County, the people that work in our admin, our offices, Public Works, our Sheriff's Department, our Fire Department, all those that keep us safe. We pray for them and we ask for your guidance in all we do. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the deletions and additions. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only change we have is to delete the under O M B and Finance request to authorize transfer of Walton County Housing Agency. We'll be dealing with that at a later date.
Motion to approve the additions and deletions.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next time, Mr. Prove the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next time is approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next item, the county administration, Mr. Larry Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item, I ask you to consider this morning is a request from Holly Holm with the Walton County Health Department to approve their 2013-2014 contract agreement. Miss Hope, if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for the information, Holly.
Our second request is to approve the sliding scale fee resolution that you have in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Only she's got a couple announcements to make.
A couple announcements that you have. One is our Walton County Health Centers are actually going to be celebrating almost a one-year anniversary in an open house altogether. It's going to be October the 4th, and you all will be getting some official invitations to that. Representative Marty Coley. Thank you, thank you. Representative Marty Coley is going to be speaking, and also your board chair, Kenneth Pridgen, is actually going to be speaking for just a few minutes at our open house. So I would love to invite all of you there for that open house and ribbon cutting. We are doing a lot of work in the community, and we just need to get the word out to our community about all the different services that we're providing to meet for primary care. So I wanted to officially invite you to that today. The last thing I want to mention, I don't know if any of you have heard of about Florida Walks, but it's something that's been developed for, actually through the Florida Association of County Health Officials and our commissioners. It is called What Is Florida Walks? And if you go to your website, your county website, there, you're going to find some information about it. We've been encouraged to encourage you all to participate in that. What I'm understanding, if you go to the website, the Florida Association of Counties website, you're going to see that, and you can pull it up. But they're encouraging each county in the state of Florida to participate with this. It's actually almost like a virtual walk. It's going to begin October the 1st, and I believe it ends May the 31st, but they're challenging each county to walk. And what they would like to do is enlist 14 county employees, and that could be some of the Health Department employees, that could be some of several. But I don't know if any of you are interested in maybe taking control of that and moving forward with this for our county. But there'll be 14 employees, and what you do is actually you go on, and they're encouraging to walk wherever you walk. If it's in the gym, it's at home, whatever, you're going to go in, put your name in, put the miles that you walk, and they're hoping that they can do a virtual walk from Pensacola all the way down to Key West. So I'd just like to encourage you to start moving and to start walking, and we'd be glad to help you all with the local health department in this endeavor. So if anybody's interested in moving forward, I don't know if you've heard anything about it, have you? Well, it's through the Florida Association of Counties, and we've been the ones to kind of help to encourage that. So if there's any interest from you as a county commissioner and you'd like to move forward with this, give me a call if you don't mind. We'd like to put a team together and work on doing something for Walton County.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Just walked off. Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Mr. Steve Yeager with the Walton County Economic Development Alliance.
Mr. Chairman, board members, good morning. All of you know that Airbus Industries, a European-based aircraft manufacturer, is setting up its final assembly line in the U.S. in Mobile, Alabama. It's supposed to open by 2015. In connection with that, Airbus is planning to cluster its various suppliers of components and various parts for the aircraft along the I-10 corridor both east and west of Mobile. It represents a very unique opportunity for this region to secure the presence of new industry catering to the aerospace and aviation side of manufacturing. And Hamburg, Germany is the headquarters of Airbus Industry, and they are having their annual supply chain conference where all their suppliers are going to be coming into Hamburg the first week of December to meet with Airbus. It's a very unique opportunity for the five counties of northwest Florida, all of which have banded together to form an aerospace alliance to try to attract these suppliers, these components manufacturers, to this region. The five counties are Escambia, Santa Rosa, Okaloosa, Walton County, and Bay County here in Florida. Toward that end, all five counties believe that we need to get elected officials and community leaders, government appointees, and regional business leaders to sign up and participate and learn about aviation and aerospace as a potential economic driver for this region. We have crafted, in conjunction with that, a leadership forum in Hamburg, Germany, the week after Airbus's supply chain conference. That would be the week of December, basically 8th through 11th, four days. We have assembled an itinerary that will give all those who attend an understanding of the potential for aviation and aerospace in this region. And we have furnished you a letter from the Aerospace Alliance, signed by myself and signed by the other four county economic development organizations, inviting three specific individuals from county government to participate in this trade mission, in this Aerospace Alliance Conference in Hamburg, Germany, the second week of December. The cost of the itinerary, including air, three hotel nights, certain meals, and the forum itself, will be approximately $2,500 a person. This is not a Christmas shopping in Germany type of trip. This is going to be two days of total immersion in aviation and aerospace activity. The supply chain forum will have a succession of speakers from Airbus and from the aerospace and aviation industries to present their concepts to you so you can learn all about it. And on the second day, there will be a tour of the Airbus assembly line in Hamburg, Germany. Each participant will be responsible for their own trip costs wherever they may be sourced. The media will be on this trip. Northwest Florida Daily News is sending somebody, and Northwest Florida Daily News actually had a very positive editorial in their Sunday paper endorsing this as an economic development potential initiative for this region. So if there's an action item on your agenda, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions of Mr. Yeager. I guess I do question the number of people going because we did, you know, vote last night to hold the village the same, and I realize it doesn't come out of ad valorem taxes. You know, I can understand, of course, Mr. Gardner's going. I can understand you going, and I would, I would think maybe one representative from the commission, perhaps Mr. Emphell, could, because that's his district, could go and then report back to the rest of us. And then I think we should target, rather than Airbus, I think we should go and try to target the suppliers, you know, ourselves. They're the ones that are going to be picking the sites. It ain't going to be Airbus, you know. So we need, to me, we need to find out from them what kind of education, what kind of, you know, skills that we need. So I'd like to see us target those people as well as trying to, you know, Okaloosa County because of their, you know, connection with aerospace is probably going to get a number of these. How do we get those people that are going to work there to live in Walton County? Because that would be a boon to us as well. So that's, that's my question of the whole thing.
Commissioner, Ed Gardner from the EDA Board and also representing Power South will be in Hamburg the week before the leadership forum, working with the supply chain conference and soliciting those suppliers, on behalf of our county as well as the other counties in Power South's area, all five counties, actually. But you're absolutely correct. Okaloosa does have a little bit of a leg up in the sense that Crestview already has some aviation manufacturing going on there. At the same time, we have an extraordinarily attractive industrial park at Mossy Head. We have other sites throughout the county which can be developed, and the workforce challenges that apply to our population also apply to the other counties as well. I think we all have a significant challenge in securing and educating the kind of workforce we need for this type of work if we're fortunate enough to land it.
I think too, yeah, and I know that we have, we have a labor problem here. We don't have the labor trained to do this kind of work. That's one of the challenges, I think. But the other thing is, you know, we've just asked a lot of people to cut their budgets, a lot of departments to cut their budgets. And, you know, if it doesn't come out of ad valorem taxes, it comes out of somebody's, comes out of some tax, some budget somewhere. So I think that, I agree with Commissioner Commander. I think one person going would be plenty, and I think, I think Chairman Pridgen should either go himself or pick the person that goes, but I just can't see spending $10,000 right now on this particular thing. I think with you going and with Ed Gardner going and one of, you know, of the commissioners or the county administrator going, I think that's, I think that's plenty of representation. I just, I just don't see why all these people need to go. I just, I don't think it's an efficient use of that money.
Any other questions?
I think there's some people out there that...
Yes, sir.
I'm J.B. Hiller, resident of Unioniaq on this matter. We just went through a rather trying time with a new budget, holding the line. Something like this to me seems to be rather extravagant at this point of time. I agree with Commissioner Commander, Commissioner Meadows, that probably one person representing Walton County at this time would be sufficient. We're looking at years and years down the road, Airbus to build this plant over Mobile. There would be other opportunities for meetings and so forth, and if you will, junkets to Europe to talk to these people. They haven't come over here to talk to us as county representatives. So let's see what they want to do about suppliers in surrounding counties and so forth. I think it's a reasonable request to hold the line on expenses for this at this point, and I'd recommend that maybe one person, the director of EDA, possibly one commissioner, but four people, I think is extravagant. Thank you.
Question, just to clarify, each of the five counties has been allocated up to 10 slots on the itinerary. We don't have to fill all 10, and also those 10 slots include private business and industry, could include mayors, council, city council members from our municipalities. It's really up to whoever wants to go, so this is really your call.
Stan Field, do you have something?
No, I was just going to comment to Mr. Hillier that each agency that's sending the persons are responsible for that. The board would be responsible solely for the commissioner and/or the county administrator going. It's not that we would be paying for each. You've got your own budget to go. Mr. Gardner's got his budget to go, and it's not coming out of county funds. And the second thing is, with regard to it, the intent would be to use the timber harvesting revenue coming from the industrial park to cover the board's side of the trip, not coming out of ad valorem taxes or any other tax money.
I think we give them $137,000 a year, so it is coming from us. We are, we're sending him. It's coming from, we don't, we...
It's his budget, yes.
Exactly. But his budget comes from us. We just granted him $137,000. I move that we, that our chairman either go or decide who goes, one person from the, from the board or from the staff.
I'll second the motion.
Do, do...
That was a motion?
Okay, okay, okay. And I can designate someone to go.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Yeager. Mr. Chairman, under Admin, item five on your agenda, the first item is to, we need to reschedule our November 12 regular meeting due to a conflict with Florida Association of Counties. Staff suggest we move that meeting to November the 7th, which is a Thursday. We would move it to Monday, but that is a holiday, and have a 9:00 a.m. meeting here in Unioniaq with a very limited agenda, just to make sure we pay the appropriate bills and take care of any emergency matters. So that would be a, moving the November 12 meeting to November 7th, again with a limited agenda to pay bills and take care of any emergency matters we may have.
Would that be a morning or after?
It's not. I was...
So I thought so, what you said, yes, I can do.
So then, when would the, when would the second commission in November be?
Their normal date, the 4th to 26th.
That's close to a holiday, isn't it?
It's two days before Thanksgiving.
The only thing about having it on the 8th, why do we have it up here? And if there's land use issues that are proposed for that, you're going to, you're going to push those into another meeting up here. I think it ought to be on the 8th, but I think it ought to be in South Walton.
Wherever, morning, noon, heaven.
The 7th, yeah, yeah. I think it ought to be in South Walton.
Do it at 9:00 in the morning.
Are you going to do it in the afternoon?
No, I think you ought to do it at the regular time.
That would allow for any...
Yeah.
That's probably a wise move, so we certainly would agree with that.
What time then?
4:00.
I possibly will not be, be able to be there, but I'll try to rearrange some meetings.
Okay, so that would be at, on the 8th at 4:00 in South Walton.
7th.
7th, excuse me. She said the 8th.
She said the 8th.
I did. I was thinking we were going to meet on Friday night.
And then go, go to your house or something.
Yeah, yeah, and then dinner after, yeah.
Is the motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is a lease agreement between the Mossy Head Water Works and the Walton County Health Department to utilize a facility owned by the Water Works for the clinic in Mossy Head that we funded into budget. Staff recommends your approval.
Any questions?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is regarding emergency medical service billing rates. We have, staff has done some research regarding neighboring counties and what their rates are and how those rates are impacted by Medicaid cost and payments, and have presented you with a recommended new fee schedule. If you're so inclined to move forward, we would bring back a resolution for, the appropriate resolution for adoption at the next scheduled meeting.
The motion on that?
Yeah, if the board wants to consider those rates, we'll bring the resolution back for your consideration.
No motion.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
The next issue, Mr. Chairman, is regarding an RFP for emergency medical services billing and collection. Over time, we've been through a number of means and methods of billing and collecting our EMS charges. We're currently under contract with emergency medical consultants, which was a, we entered that contract in somewhat of an emergency situation. We didn't have anywhere else to turn at that time. It was not competitively bid, and we think, we believe it would be prudent that we issue an RFP for billing and collection services in order to make sure we do have a competitive process.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Are we going back to Public Works?
I'm sorry?
Are we going back to Public Works?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Don't worry, why you skip that?
The next item is regarding Public Works, we just want to get it in order. Two items we need action on. One is a request to Deed County right of way to DOT in the areas where the county roads intersect with US 331. These are the areas that'll be taken in the expansion of the roadway. Public Works or Volker from representing DOT is here if you have any questions.
Any questions?
None.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Along that same line, Commissioner says we're asking you to approve a resolution granting some temporary easements to DOT to allow the construction to tie into those county maintained roads along, associated with the four-laning of 331.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Glad we're going back to.
Thank you. The next item is regarding an addendum to the Waste Management Franchise Agreement pursuant to the board approving the county to pay for $11.93 per condominium unit. We had to amend the franchise agreement, which would allow waste management and facilitate their ability to build the county for those charges. The agreement that's been presented to you has been vetted by legal, is good to go. We have a, had a verbal commitment from Waste Management that they were satisfied with the agreement and agreed to the terms. We have not gotten an executed copyback from them, and we will not execute it on our end until we get that from them. So we're asking you to approve this as an addendum to the Solid Waste Franchise Agreement between Walton County and Waste Management.
Any questions?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Next item, Commissioners are, we have been working, and we've held two public workshops regarding the design development standards for the US 331 corridor. We have presented to you the comments that we received during those workshops from the public. We would like to request that we schedule a 3:00 p.m. workshop on October the 8th, which would be just prior to our next board meeting, for Commissioners to give staff direction as to which of those comments you would like to have included in the final draft. That final draft will be presented to you as a, as an ordinance change to the Land Development Code. At that point, there would be multiple opportunities for public input on that final draft. At this session, we would anticipate just dialogue between the Commissioners and staff to make sure that the, the items that have, the comments and suggestions that have been made during the workshops, that the ones you wish to have included in the final draft are done so. So our request is that we set a 3:00 o'clock workshop for Commissioners on October the 8th to consider the inclusion of public comments and suggestions on the 331 design development standards.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Next request regarding the County Road 38 and 395 intersection. Previously, the board had approved the construction, funding and construction of a roundabout at that intersection. Subsequent to that, staff was asked to review it to assure that that is the most feasible approach. In doing so, we looked at a number of opportunities or areas that may be able to make some changes that would improve the situation and perhaps save some money. We asked Joe Poole to do an analysis of the intersection, and the bottom line was if we phased in a functional, signalized intersection, beginning with a westbound right turn lane, that those improvements would be substantial to carry this intersection for an additional five years without moving forward to the fully signalized intersection. That turn lane would be an integral part of the signalized intersection at the point in time that was warranted and became the favored option. But at this point, and we can put that turn lane in for... and we can put that, uh, turn lane in for a little over $200,000 as opposed to the 500, $600,000 we were looking at for, um, it was about $800,000 for the roundabout. So we can save a considerable amount of money. We can facilitate improvements to the project. It can be a phased approach that we can add to as the situation there indicates that we should. Now granted, these funds are not general revenue, I have loan dollars there, property share monies, but it will allow us to make more and greater improvements in that area along 38. So staff recommends and, um, that we would amend that earlier decision of installing the, the roundabout to funding and installing a right turn lane. The impact on the right-of-way exchange that we've come with the folks from EBSCO is still the same. We'll still need the same right-of-way, and so that agreement that we're vetting today should be sufficient to make this work as well. And I believe Representative EBSCO's here, and they're good with us moving forward with this, as long as it doesn't impact that. And, and the needs are the same as far as exchanging right-of-way north of 38 for right-of-way south of 38.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak? Um, I had asked staff after our last meeting, I heard so much controversy about it. I asked Cliff now, in particular, and our staff, would they take another look at it, see if there was anything we could do other than the roundabout, which we seem to have gotten a lot of objection over. I appreciate them looking at it again, taking another look, and, and saving us money. I believe this turn lane, yes, will help us at least for five years or so to, to accomplish what we need to accomplish now, and then maybe we'll address it when the time comes. Do we want to take public comment before I make a motion, or?
No.
I have a question, Mrs. Davis. Since there was, it was a 3-2 vote, I think, last time, will it require someone from the affirmative to, to make the motion?
And that would, that would be, yeah, that would be me. I make the motion that we, how do I do this, Mr. Davis, that we set aside our previous-
Amend.
Uh, amend our previous motion to, uh, for, right now, put in a, an additional turn lane at that intersection, and the westbound approach operation at this time.
That, that, that will cer- certainly suffice.
Okay.
Second. Now, motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is that it, Mr. Jones?
I believe so.
Mr. Bagman?
You know, he is a perfect representative for the TDC. The man always has a tan, actually.
I, I got it with Mr. Jones yesterday.
Yesterday on the golf course?
Mr. Chairman? First, we're asking you to consider-
They were working on the beach, weren't they? They were working out on the beach.
Picking up trash on the beach.
I was picking up trash on the beach on Saturday, right, yeah. The coastal cleanup. We're asking you to renew the annual contract with Heffley and Associates is our first item, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
As far as updates, just want to remind everyone, our annual meeting will be October 15th at 4:30 PM on the deck at the Hilton. You're all invited. We're gonna celebrate the beach and the water and, and a very productive year. Also wanted to let you know, we've had 86 volunteer applications for the 36 committee slots. We will take those names to the Jewish Development Council on the 1st for confirmation for those volunteers. And with that, the new year starts for us. We have, I didn't want to assume, the statute gives you the discretion to either appoint the chair or allow the council to appoint the chair, and I, I wanted some direction from the Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah, I think since, um, you know, I've, I've served a year. I'm ready to step down, and I would recommend that we would appoint Tim Norris as the chairperson.
Is that your motion?
That would be my motion, yeah. That we recommend that we appoint Tim Norris as our chairperson of the TDC.
And you would maintain your position there anyway, as it be?
Yeah, I would stay on the advisory council, and then he would be, he would be the chair. I would just step down from the chair, because I've served my, my term.
I'll second the motion.
Any other questions? Well, motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I-
Since Commissioner Meadows, I, I don't want to assume anything, but since she's volunteered to serve again for another year, her term actually runs out in November, as long as we're up here. Could we have y'all reappoint her at this time, or would that be appropriate?
So moved.
Second.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all we have, subject questions.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. The first item I have is, I just wanted to make sure you were advised of the new ethics legislation requiring four hours of ethics training. I provided to you, and I hope to your staff, a, a letter from the Commission on Ethics that answers many questions about the ethics legislation. So I just want to make sure you were formally advised that you have to have the four hours, and you have to have it before the end of the year. It's a calendar year deal. I believe the Florida Association of Counties is providing some of that training. As a school board member, I'm getting mine Wednesday through a school board association meeting, so I just want to make sure you're advised and know you have to have it done before the end of the year.
At that end, Mr. Davis, staff checked, and I believe every Commissioner except Mr. Prygen has their certificates of completion for this year. So we're, you're good to go. We gotta figure out how to get this, get him ethical, but.
I guess I do have a question. Do we just keep this in our files? Do we turn this into the FAC?
That is one question that was not answered. It's how, how, I would, I would do both. I would, I would hang on to it personally. I would have the staff also hang on to it.
Yeah. And do we, should we send a copy to FAC?
I don't know if FAC has any jurisdiction.
The Ethics Commission?
There is a reporting requirement to the Ethics Commission, so.
Okay.
So, thank you, and thank you for that. The next item is, I have put on the agenda requests to receive public input or to schedule public workshops on our outdoor events ordinance and the roadside fundraising ordinance. First of all, I had put it before you guys a couple of, three weeks, three meetings ago, for your comments. I've received your comments. The current draft has your comments included in it, or your changes and additions. Since that date, I have received now a significant number of comments from some staff and from stakeholders. The staff comments, especially from Mr. Dicey's in the audience, would actually make this a much better ordinance, so I need to include those. They are not included in the current draft. So my suggestion to you is allow me to do that, and then schedule a couple, at least two, maybe even three workshops, to make sure we have good public comment and stakeholder comment on, on both those ordinances.
So do we need a motion to that effect?
We do, please.
So moved.
Second.
Now, motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I just have a quick question. On that, are you gonna send us a copy of all the comments?
Yes, yes, ma'am, I sure will. The next item is a, a Business Tax Receipt Ordinance Resolution. You directed us to start the process of coming up with an ordinance and resolution. We actually have a draft of an ordinance and resolution ready to go. However, there's a working group that we have put together that's going, that consists of folks from the chamber, the clerk, the planning department. This is a fairly large undertaking in terms of logistics, informing the public, informing the business community. And before we undertook, frankly, a significant number of hours in that direction, I just want direction from the Board that you want us to continue that and, and start ramping up those educational, uh, those educational opportunities for the business community and, and for the general public. Because it's going to be a fairly large undertaking to make sure we, we explain it clearly to everyone, what everyone's going to have to do, what the pub, uh, planning department, what, what the tax collector's office is going to have to physically put in, into place. And before we even start all that, I want to make sure that you still wanted us to travel down that road, if that's a reasonable request.
Yeah, I, I, I think so. A lot of work has gone into this, and I think the economic development community, um, needs it. I think the fire department need, fire departments need it. So I, I think we ought to go forward, at least, you know, bring the word nuts forward.
Absent any other objections, I will get the working group together, and we'll start going down that road. Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is, I had removed a request to award a contract on the US 90, Highway 98 median landscape maintenance. I think it was two meetings ago I asked to remove it. I have reviewed the RFP, the RFP process, what, what happened in terms of what was before the, the evaluation committee. It is my suggestion at this point that we actually not award that bid, that we reject it, and that we re-advertise it as a hard bid. There is no reason to have a request for proposal. We know exactly what needs to be done, so we, we rebid it as a hard bid, and that way we'll have no questions about evaluating the proposals.
Yeah, motion to rebid the project.
I guess I do have one question. In your, in your action, it says, you know, award it to the lowest bidder, Harper Landscaping. Is there any, why are you going back on?
Frankly, Commissioner, one of the members of the committee has, had a tenuous contact with that organization. And I say tenuous, I don't know that it rises to the level of a conflict of interest, but it gives the appearance that it could. And so, and over, frankly, an abundance of caution and to avoid two bid challenges one way or the other, it would seem to me the best course of action was simply not do a request for proposal, but just rebid it as a hard bid.
Okay.
Have a second.
Second.
Now, a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item that I would ask is that we are prepared to present a settlement offer, and I need an executive session to discuss that settlement offer with Hicks versus Walton County, case number 09CA1709, to be held October 1st at 4:00 PM. And I would need a motion of second to schedule that executive session for that purpose.
The Gulf Symposium, which a number of Commissioners are going to be at, is on October 1st, and that's down South End.
No.
Adam?
No. What's on, actually, on that day, there's a meeting in Mobile with NACO. NACO, the National Association of Counties, is getting together with, with the five states that are affected, to see if the five states want to, to serve, want to have a coalition within NACO. That's, yeah.
I also show it being that the Gulf Power Symposium.
Oh, Gulf Power. You said Gulf, yeah.
Gulf Power Symposium.
Oh, yeah.
I believe there's a number of Commissioners going to that.
We thought you meant Gulf Consortium.
I will be out of town that day.
Yeah, and I will be-
I'm sorry, I thought we called, but that we can, if, if it's okay, if you can just find a date on your calendar, the sooner the better. I'd like to get that.
It'd be better, it's kind of a drop dead date to get this thing done.
Yes, we need to get it done before October 1st.
The 3rd.
I think you're on October 3rd.
I'll be in Mobile, but, I mean, you'll have three here.
Can I vote absentia?
No.
As far as notice requirements, what are, what are we required to do?
We just need to set the date and announce it today. That's all we need.
I mean, can it be later this week?
No, we have to do it in an open meeting. We have to set the executive session at an open meeting. And I'm sorry, I thought we'd vetted the date with you guys.
I did tell, I did tell the ladies that we'd be going.
I did too, as well. I told Chrissy, but I could do it.
We've got a pre-meeting already scheduled on the 8th, but can this one be done also?
You know, Commissioners, Mr. Jones has a great idea. We can actually do it today if we announce it today. We can do it at the close of the meeting.
Okay.
So moved.
Second, let's announce it.
Now, motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So we have a second session after this meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Good. Take care of that, Ron.
Last item is, as you know, the Florida Legislature, I'm gonna be a little cynical here, in their infinite wisdom, has passed a new statute which requires a policy or procedure or ordinance, they weren't particularly specific, on allowing public input at county meetings. And what I have done is I have taken drafts and, and passed ordinances from five or six different counties and municipalities. I have amalgamated them into a policy, which essentially is what we are doing now. It's nothing particularly earth-shattering or changing in terms of what we are doing today. So I'm, I'm gonna ask the Commission to, to pass it as it is. There has been a concern raised that we might have a constitutional free speech violation. I may be the only liberal Democrat up here, so I'll probably be more concerned about that than anybody. But I would like to go ahead and pass it today, and then let me meet with those folks who may have those concerns, and I, I can certainly, if we need to change something, or if I discover some constitutional problem, which I haven't discovered yet, I can certainly bring back an amendment. But I, the, the ordinance goes into effect October 1st, so we'd like to get a policy in, in place.
So we have to have an ordinance back October 1st?
Yes.
A policy or procedure. Yeah, I think we need to be clear that this is, it's not a policy. It is a policy, and it can be, you can change it with a majority vote of the Board at any meeting.
Yes.
Any questions?
Mr. Dr. Riley, just a second.
Yes, sir. Mr. Riley?
Good morning. Don Riley, I'm representing myself and the Walton County Taxpayers Association. I've sent all of you an email of asking that action on this be deferred. Benjamin Franklin was asked in 1777, when he was exiting the Constitutional Convention of the United States, by some lady, "So what do we have, a democracy or a republic?" And he replied, "We have a republic, if you can keep it." There is a distinct difference between democracy and republican form of government. We have a republican form of government. The Walton County Taxpayers Association is absolutely dedicated to that proposition, because it is fundamental to everything else that flows from government, including taxes. We have, as an essential of the republican form of government, the communication of the thoughts, opinions, desires of members of the public, the voting public, the taxpaying public. Communication of those thoughts and so forth to you as our representatives. That is fundamental to the republican form of government. Any limitation on that, I think, is at least as worthy of public input. Prior to instituting something that regulates that very input, it's at least as worthy of public comment, of public forum, public hearings, just as we have here two other instances with the 331 corridor design. There was at least one, I think, two of those sessions for public hearings on that. I think that the way we are regulated in addressing you is considerably more important than public comments on that design. There is a second, uh, public comment in here on the outdoor events and roadside fundraising ordinance. I think this is at least as worthy of public input, public hearings, as that. That is not to say that we have major objections to this. We have not had time to consider this, and we think that the public deserves more time than is the case. And we, as an organization, we as individuals, want more time to consider this and communicate our concerns, if and and we have some, to you, such that you have time, before you act on this, to take into account the concerns of the citizens as expressed to you, after we've had time to formulate considered opinions. I would ask that you schedule public hearings on this, and defer action on this, and not do this today. Thank you.
I have a suggestion.
Can't hear you. Nope, nope.
I'm on now. What's the ramifications, if it's that we don't pass this today?
The statute is essentially silent as to what happens if you do or do not have a policy. However, there are penalties for not allowing public comment in a formalized setting. So what I was gonna suggest, and, and I'm sensitive to Dr. Riley's concerns, is there'd be a motion in a second that we continue our current public input procedure, and then we'll workshop this, and then that way, we have something passed that has policy implication, and we can come back and, and reduce it to something more formal later, and that way, we're covered on the statute.
Sound good with everybody?
Yeah.
Need a motion?
No, because, or, we could adopt the first page of this, and the first paragraph of the second page, and then we could just say, "Public may comment on items that appear on the agenda," period. And then, and then the page four, "Public comment on non-agenda items shall be allowed," or something like that, and then additional information will be, and then we could adopt, you know, the, the language later.
Commissioner, that's essentially what I'm suggesting is, because that, that is exactly what we're doing right now. So if, if you, the motion would be, if, just to continue our current policy regarding public input at meetings, as long as that's in the record, then I'm- at meetings, as long as that's in the record, then I'm, I feel confident we're covered on the statute and then we can reduce it to something more formal later.
Yeah, because some of this, you know, why can't speakers discuss matters which are subject of public hearings?
Because there's an opportunity at a public hearing to do that. In other words, you wouldn't want somebody, again, that's something you may want to change, but you wouldn't want somebody to come in and speak for 10, 15 minutes on a matter that we're going to have a public hearing on in 20 minutes.
Okay.
I'll so moved your, what you said.
Okay.
So we'll go with what we're doing now and then we'll codify it.
Yes, ma'am.
After we have some workshops.
After workshops. Okay. Have a motion?
Yes, sir.
We got a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Everything more?
That's it for me. Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Meadows?
I don't have anything. Did y'all skip the Mossy Head Water Works or did I miss that?
You missed it.
I missed, okay. Sorry about that. We just skipped.
Commissioner Commander?
I don't have a thing.
Commissioner Enfield? Commissioner Chapman?
Nothing.
Okay. Any public comments?
Let's take a 10-minute break.
Debbie Hillard in the PDIAC, first let me apologize, I don't have a clue what Dr. Riley said. My hearing aids are on the blink, so I'm having trouble here understanding this morning. I understand it. You have adopted or going to adopt this resolution, but yet it's still up for grabs as far as what it turns out to be in the long run. Is that right, Mark?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Over the years, I've been here many times before you and Mark says it's supposed, this, what we're doing is what we, what this will do is the same thing we've been doing all this time. Well, I sort of disagree with some of that. So when you have the workshop, you'll hear more from me. But I will say this, over the years, no matter who the chairman has been, this is probably, I think, one of the better county commissioners around the panel as far as allowing the public to participate. And I've never been cut off in debate, but sometimes I maybe should have been. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that this commission here, for the most part, there's been some instances in the past that has been challenging, but for the most part, you've been very receptive to the public and I appreciate that. So when you get to the public comment period at the end of the session here, I'll have something else I'd like to talk to you about.
I do, this is it. I do have a question. Go ahead. I have a question on that, same thing you're talking about.
About what?
Not of you, but does this apply to the planning commission as well and the other commissioners? Because I think that it should, because I think that I've had a lot of complaints about them and.
The short answer is there are rules and regulations already in place for quasi-judicial hearings that allow for public comment. Now, one of our, frankly, one of our, one of our policies or ordinances, rather, as it relates to quasi-judicial hearing, is actually inconsistent with current case law. Where Wayne and I have talked about and we're trying to get that resolved, which actually goes the other direction, Commissioner, that one of, there's, there's case law out there now that says that objectors, those who are objecting to a particular development order, have no right to cross-examine witnesses that are brought forward by the, brought forward by the applicant or by the staff. We, our current ordinance, ordinance allows that kind of cross-examination. So we actually, our ordinance actually only, only has in mind testimony from the staff and from the applicant and not from the objector. So we've got, we're working on fixing that, right?
Which brings me to my second question. Must we do the?